Here's here. When I went to get my flu shot, the mayor got to see my hat and face shield combination with my mask. And she very graciously did not fall down laughing in the parking lot, so.
All right, I guess. We go, we can get started. All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining the meeting this evening. And we have a full agenda and I'm going to try and stick to it. This is our sixth meeting, and again, thank you all for your participation and your time. We have a number of items to cover, and the first obviously is a call to order, which has already taken place. Second is a roll call, and I believe we have all of our voting members except for Sarai here. And I heard from her earlier, and she wasn't sure if she was going to make it or not, but they hope to join us. We're going to roll into item number three, which is old business and minutes of our September 23 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Lois Gray, is there a second?
A second.
Mark, okay, great. Any discussion on the minutes?
There's just one misspelling. In the section about where Elizabeth was speaking, the word follows got all mixed up.
Thank you, Lois. And again, I wanted to take the opportunity, follow us at BPLCT on Instagram and Facebook. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Lois.
Okay. Any other discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear. Michelle? Yes? Okay.
Your sound's off, Michelle.
Oh, Sarai is on the call as well. Michelle, you're muted. Okay, there we go. All right, and I'm assuming, did we hear from Jesse or Nancy? Is everyone muted?
Yep, I said aye.
Okay, great. All right. And Budunzi?
Aye.
Aye, perfect. And Sarai?
Aye.
Very great. All right, wonderful. All right, I just. Under new business, we have item number four, project timeline and schedule with Tai Su Kim Partners. And just wanted to take a moment before we roll into the presentation and welcome Tai Su and Wit to our meeting this evening. As everyone knows, at our last meeting, we authorized the committee to do pre-refereendum scope services with TSKP up to $25,000. We went into the fixed fee for the new construction as well as renovation. And following some of the party conversations we had after during our last meeting, we have gone back to TSKP to ask them to provide us with the different ranges on a sliding scale for the scope of services of a contract. We don't have anything to share with you tonight, but we will have something for the next meeting. But again, I did want the committee to know that we heard what folks were saying. We were trying to get more information so that we can get some ranges with a sliding scale. Once we have that, we'll get back. Hopefully, we'll have it for our next meeting and we will go through that. Once we finalize that information, we will share it with the committee before the next meeting, the contract anyway. And my hope is that at our next meeting, we can proceed with the contract for the entire project as it relates to architectural services. With that being said, I'd like to turn it over. I don't have to introduce Wit and Tai Su. We've all met them. But wanted to allow them to present on the timeline, the schedule, the sites, programs, concepts, and schedules. And again, we're not going to get into any fee discussions because that information is not yet pertinent to our discussions for tonight. That being said, I'll turn it over to Wit. Thank you, Wit.
Thanks, everybody. Hello. If I can just share one of my screens here. Can you see that? Oh, I have to hit the share button there. Can you see the my screen? Yep, okay.
Yes.
All right, so on the left, this is just sort of the agenda of what we want to talk about a little bit this evening. Just going to start by walking through some of the sites that we're going to be exploring with this study. And then we'd want to talk a little bit about program for the library. And then we'll take you through how we see the schedule of the study and beyond the study going. So with that, let me switch over to the PowerPoint. So this is the sites that we understand we're going to be studying. So we have the Prosser Library site here, Town Hall, Wintonbury Mall, the community center, a vacant property down near Blue Hills and Cottage Grove. And then the Blue Hills branch, like the McMahon branch library here. So one of our first steps will be to gather information, whatever we can, from whatever sources the town has or any knowledge that you can all offer about each of these sites. First of all, of course, Prosser Library, we're pretty familiar with this site, having been involved in the previous study in 2016. And our understanding is that in addition to the actual library site here, we're going to be exploring options that might bridge the stream to make use of the old lumber company property across the river for parking or other. So we'll start to explore those areas. These this maps is the information we've gotten from the town GIS. But certainly, if there's other sources of information or other things that people can offer as we start this out, that would be very helpful. The second site, Town Hall, also the site that we had looked at previously. And we will again revisit the site and see how things might accommodate a library or on the site. Third site mentioned was the Wintonbury Mall site. And so I believe this is the perimeter of the site. I don't know if there's anything available in terms of information on the building there or if there's other information on how we should approach this site overall. So I will, we can kind of come back and revisit these. Let me just quickly go through each of the sites. Community Center down here, recently completed. This is the site. Again, we want to get whatever information we can about this site and the other uses on the site and where we might be looking on the site to accommodate. Something. This is the town property at the northwest corner of Cottage Grove Road and Blue Hills Avenue, mostly wooded. I think there may be a little bit of wetlands creeping in on the west corner of it. The fifth site. And then, of course, the final site being the McMahon Branch Library on Blue Hills. So as we move forward, our first steps will be gathering, as I said, the information from each of these sites. We're going to want to revisit them, walk them. And any of the sites that have buildings on them, make sure we have available information on those buildings. So we have the whatever we need to kind of start exploring options. So that's that's kind of the first step. And as we start to develop concepts for these sites, this is the criteria we're going to be looking at, similar to what we had done in the previous study, just looking at how the program could arrange itself on the site, how the building would fit, what the impact is for parking and drop offs and pedestrians, how efficient the building would be there. If there's other issues related to flooding, obviously, we're familiar with the Prosser Library site issues. If there's advantages or disadvantages to it, the site relative to other town activities or other aspects of what's adjacent to it. So each of these will need to kind of look at and score each site as we start to evaluate them. Now, the other component that we need to establish as we start to look at these options is the program that we're designing to. And this is the program that had been developed back in 2016. Left side is actually the existing library program at that time. And based on the meetings at that time with library and staff, this was the program that was developed for the proposed library. So certainly, we have questions about whether this program still stands. Has it evolved in the four years since? There have been other needs. I think it would be worthwhile to meet with the library staff and talk through some of that and see what the implications are so that we can reconfirm what we're trying to design to on these sites. The other thing, of course, with the sites is, I think, as we spoke at the last meeting, because of the way that the town is arranged, you know, the first three sites are all on the west side of town near the center there. And if that site accommodates, what would be defined as the main library, then presumably the branch library would remain on Blue Hills. If we look at the sites over towards Blue Hills on the east side of town, either the new site or adding on to the McMahon branch. If that becomes the primary library site, does that mean that we would then be looking at a branch library on the west side of town? Or is another option that there would just be a single library, no matter where it ends up? I guess I'd be interested in thoughts on that. Let me just take you through the schedule. This is the overall milestones that we're looking at. So starting now, we're looking to, over the next two to three months, explore each of these sites, develop some initial concepts about how they might be used, and then be able to come back and and start presenting some of those options and narrowing them down in meetings with your committee during early 2021. So that we could get to a point where we're ready to start meeting with town commissions in the early spring. As we develop what we're looking at designing, we'll get to a point where we're able to present some ideas to the public, and that's something we'll want to coordinate with you as we get to that point. That's what these blocks illustrate here. In more detail, in the near term, just focusing in on the near term, the next few weeks, we'll be focused on gathering this building information, investigating the buildings that are there, walking the sites, hopefully arranging a meeting with library staff to talk about the program, confirm the program. And with that information, we can then start some of our initial planning concepts for the sites to test out, some test fitting. So we would expect that we could start to have some options to lay out in a very informal way, probably in November and December, with the hope of ending up just after the new year with a draft of what might be presented to the public in the form that is determined at that time. And we're more flexible as to how that is done. These dots indicate our initial thoughts for meeting. So we're assuming to meet at least once a month. That's what this report, I see on the invite, that the dates may not be the same, but that was our general idea. And then as we start to narrow down and develop these concepts further than during January, February, March, we can confirm what we're presenting. Perhaps some of these sites will drop off in that process and we'll narrow down to the ones that are the most viable that we can present. And then get ourselves to the point where we have a preferred direction that we can then present to commissions in the town and develop the finalized the report by April, May of next spring. And based on that, then we're going forward to try to get the necessary approvals into the summer. We need to plan to submit the application for state library grant by August and then develop materials for the town referendum, of course, in November. So that's kind of the overview of the schedule. Let me open it up to questions.
Lois?
I think it's wonderful to have that long list of options. And having been one of the people who suggested the Winton Mary Mall, I wonder if there are some, if we were asked the powers that be in the town right now, they would say, don't spend your time. Just that the Wintonbury Mall has been a problem, but it would need to be purchased. I just wonder whether the council would say, don't even think about it, or whether we really are open to looking at all of these different ideas.
What is the status of the Wintonbury Mall property right now?
Privately owned.
It is, okay.
And it's, it's, there are quite a few commercial restaurants and other commercial activities going on there. But it has been an eyesore for the town for years and years and years. It is very central, but I just wonder, and I'm the one who suggested it, so I'm embarrassed now. But I'm wondering whether the mechanics of trying to pursue it is something that the council would say, you're spinning your wheels. On the other hand, if it turned out to be a really great idea for the town, maybe a new look at it is good. I just, I just don't want us to spend money on something that can't happen.
I mean, certainly from the standpoint of library.
They're going to hear me? Okay.
Yeah. From the standpoint of libraries being community centers and also from the current status of shopping malls suffering these days, more and more, particularly with COVID. You know, irregardless of the issues related to the building and the legal legalities of ownership, you know, there potentially could be an opportunity to create something that creates a hub and a core of activity in the building, which would be, could be desirable. But there are definitely challenges with the property. Tai Su, were you going to say something?
Yeah, well, somehow I didn't write voice, so you couldn't hear my voice. Well, I like to make a comment on the process now. We went through what we have to go through and do physical studies of various options and so on. But I like to say that really coming up the vision, what town's vision for this library is critical starting point, seems to me, because I heard last time somebody said, you know, the outdoor use, outdoor as an educational and then and also and the emphasis of community living room or use is is important and so on. So while we are studying physical aspect of the various option, but I think somehow we have come up with a process of how we really is understand the vision, how community input and librarian and towns officials and so on be able to come together and and agree on what is this vision for this library. And last time when we were involved studying this library, we had a program. But I do remember we really didn't have my, from my point of view, vision. It's more of a physical building program. I like to hear from users side, come up with what is, is this library's vision in the future. And I like to hear from you, you guys, how you're going to agree on what this library look like, what this library is for, for the people of Brumfield.
Tai Su, that's a great point, and that is really the purpose of this committee. And along with the community to come up with ideas as to what our vision is for this library. And I think along with meeting with members of the library staff, this building committee, we also want to gauge the interest and get input from our community. And so we've talked about setting up various forums and surveys to find out what the real owners of the library want to see in a new building. And I know that we've had conversations with Wit and Richard about how do we factor in the the timing to get the community input into this process.
Right, I think there's a couple of different parts of that. One is that the sort of initial discussions about what the library should be, which would be great to happen sooner rather than later, whether it's through the library staff or another kind of town forum, or as we had conveyed that letter from Alan Berger, that proposal. That's another strategy that's possible to have them, someone like that undertake a town survey that would be emailed out to all the library members or some other target audience to get some feedback. And all that should happen in the near term while we're gathering basic information. And that's sort of separate from when we start to develop a design based on this vision and start to bring that out into the public.
I just got to note that the mayor had a comment slash question that she wants to share.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone. I agree with Mr. Tai Su Kim that while we are doing our preliminary work, that it's really important to get feedback from the owners, as the chair has stated, the owners of the library, which would be our residents, the people that will be using the library. I think it's important for them to know the sites that we're looking at. I think it's important for us to hear what side of town, where they would like to see the library, as well as what they would like to see in the library. So I do believe that community input is extremely important at every single phase of this project because you want to build a library that will be used and will be appreciated. So now that we have five different locations, I'm going to put the chair on the spot. We are having a town hall meeting. I will be asking the chair to give an update at the town hall meeting. That can be the start of your conversations. But I really do believe something this big and impactful for our for our residents is to make sure that it at least get an input in every phase. So starting out from now, where would they like to see it? What would they like to see? So I am definitely in agreement with Mr. Tai Su Kim. And I'm just really, really asking, you'll hear me ask all the time, to make sure that our residents are getting an input in this. Thank you so very much.
Mark?
Um, I just want to make Wit and Tai Su aware, as you go through the the site assessments, that somewhere in the future, there will probably be a roundabout in the center of town, which will slightly affect sites one, two, and three on your map. Not to any great extent, but just something to take into consideration as you look at those three.
Yep.
And it'll certainly give it a different feel. So the town engineer has those documents. And we're probably at least two years away from that. But I believe it is something that will eventually happen.
All right, yeah, we'll take that into account. That could potentially impact the all three of those sites, you're right.
A little, a little bit. Yeah, it's more a feel than than land grab for the most part, but I think it's important to see it as it will be at that point.
Thank you.
Well, we put Alan Burger as a possible candidate to organizing and this community survey and maybe you know, come up with this vision things. That that person is possible to work for this project with. I guess I'm asking question.
Oh, I'm sure.
As said, town has money to hire Alan Burger to lead this survey and vision effort to do it. And certainly, we are not really, I would say, expert or qualified to do a survey and leading the community in input and so on, so. Will spend the money to hire somebody to come up with consensus what's this library's vision would would be for the town of Brumfield.
I think what his his proposal reflected, or the initial letter that he sent, reflected the development of a survey and survey questions that would be sent out to gauge responses from the community and then track that and gather that data and report it. I think it may be a different level of scope, and I think he does do, you know, programming efforts. But that may be beyond what he's suggesting in his letter.
Right. And one of the things that we've talked about, and I believe I shared it with you, is we are awaiting input from our library staff as to whether or not we need or want to engage a consultant on the community aspect, please. Because the staff may be inclined and able to do some of that work. So Elizabeth is going to share some remarks this evening, and I think that might be one of the topics that she'll cover. But again, you know, well, you know, we have to decide which direction we want to, you know, get input from our director before we make any final decisions as to whether or not to bring on a consultant.
Understood. Okay.
I can't see the full screen, but are there any other questions or comments of Tai Su and Wit?
I have questions.
Yes.
Go ahead, Michelle, please.
I think that I would probably address these to you, Greg. I would like to know, who is the author of the site list?
The site list is what we put together, and I believe most of those sites are from the previous endeavor into the library project, last library building committee. Sites that folks recommended.
But who is we?
We is the committee.
We didn't discuss this, I don't believe.
We had the sites listed at our last meeting, I believe.
Okay, but it wasn't discussed. I think you'll see where I'm going with the questions that I'm asking. My next part of that question is, are additional sites being sought, either from the committee or the public as a whole?
Well, we have up to six, so I don't know that if we're going to make a change from these six listed, then we would have to do that in the near term.
So are you saying that if a superior site was brought forward, if someone wished to donate a site, that you would not consider it? or someone wished to donate a site that you would not consider it?
No, we would, we could, yes.
Well, it doesn't fit in with the six, then. That's a concern. That's the reason I asked the question. At some point, is the committee going to be asked to formally approve that site list?
That site list, yes, we will approve it. And again, these were just sort of working sites. And if we were up to six, and if we wanted to go beyond or remove a site, for example, if we thought that the Wittenbury Mall is not feasible, I don't want to single one out, but if there was one or more sites that we don't believe is feasible, then we have the option and opportunity to add or revise that list.
Okay, my last question is, how is the value, both assessed and market value of each of these sites being considered with regard to the ultimate value of the entire site? Because I would think that there would be just a general idea of the value of the sites and how the the sites would either contribute or detract from the value of the building as a whole. So how are those sites being valued? If they are not now, at what point will they be valued?
Well, as a part of the, we'll be doing some conceptual cost estimating as the concepts develop for each of the sites. And we would certainly look at the tax information, the assessment information that the town has for the properties and at least be aware of that as we're developing the site. And I think it's it comes back to the criteria that we need to judge each site as to what is appropriateness for what we're doing. And, you know, as we look at the, is it the best use of the site for a library?
Okay.
Perhaps what you're getting at.
No, I do. I do notice that the missing criteria there is selection criteria don't include cost. And.
Yeah, it does. It does efficiently. Well, there is definitely costs as one of the.
Well, indirectly referred to, though.
Okay.
Okay, so my point being that when we are looking at selection criteria, there's more to it than goes to what we would prefer or whose favorite site is whose favorite site, because the value of the site is very important. What's going to come out at the end of the road with regard to the value of the site, both assessed and market value become very important. So I'd just like to know at what point that will be considered? Because I hope that I wouldn't expect it to be done immediately, but I hope that we won't wait too long, too long along the path in order to understand that.
So Michelle, are you suggesting that we add that to the site selection criteria? I mean, that's if that's what you're suggesting, then.
Well, I'm just saying that cost is missing.
I think, as Whit said, is indirectly included in, I'm assuming number 10 efficiency. But if you want, why don't we talk about adding that as a specific criteria?
Well, I think specifically related to assessed and market value, I'm looking at the end of the line.
Right.
And how the site is going to contribute to the value of the building and vice versa. So yes, I would like to add that.
Is that doable, Whit?
Yes, to the extent that we have some information on on the values for the property. I mean, we're not real estate agents, but we can, you know, if we if we have some information, we can certainly incorporate that into the, you know, the breakdown for each project so that it's it's a part of that summary.
I'm just looking at value. That's important.
Yes.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else?
Craig.
Yes.
Um, Michelle, are you talking about opportunity costs too? If we if we choose to use this site one way, it won't be available for another purpose? Or or how does having the the library in a particular part of town change the economics or the vitality of of that part of town?
At this particular point, I would not be looking at that. I would just be looking at how the site relates to the building that's proposed and the total value of it. Those concerns that you just mentioned could be added to that. But that would really be complicating the matter, at least at this point, I think, a little bit more than we could hope to justify. There are always fallout from buildings effects on neighborhoods, environments, and people. But unless there were some reason to think that an environmental impact, as in a physical one, would be a real concern, I wouldn't think that would be something we would have to be concerned with right away. Perhaps perhaps the architect, architect speaking previously, could, Mr. Engelhardt could comment on that.
I wasn't really referring to environmental impact. I was referring to vitality of the town itself.
I'm, I was talking about geographic environment. So I understand what you're saying.
Maybe in a sense, it comes relates to our last item here on the criteria, the economic development opportunities for the town in that aspect. It's what will the impact be of this project in this location on potential growth of that part of town? Yeah, I think that's certainly a characteristic that we need to explore with.
That's a good way to to phrase it. Thank you.
Okay, Marcus, hold your hand up.
Whit just said what I was gonna, part of what I was gonna say, number seventeen there. But also, we have to realize that five out of six of these possibilities or others that we may be looking at mean that we end up with abandoning our existing library building. And somehow or another, the future of that building needs to be addressed at some level. And that's a subject probably for another time.
Yeah.
We just need to be aware of that.
I think, as I alluded to when I was talking originally, that's sort of one of the questions as we start to explore these options is, you know, I guess traditionally, the main library has been kind of the center of the town on the west side. And the branch library is serving the east side of town. And depending on the sites that we explore, that dynamic could remain. Or if we end up developing over the sites over by Blue Hills, is that relationship going to flip? And so that the primary library ends up over there? And then is there a branch towards the west side of town? Or depending on where it ends up, doesn't make sense to even consider it all being combined into a single library? Maybe the town is too spread out for that to make sense. But those are some sort of fundamental questions that we might have as we start to look at these options.
I can't see the full screen, so I don't know if everyone who wants to speak is able to, you know, to speak. Nancy, you have the control there. Is there anyone with their?
Do you want me to stop sharing my screen so that you can see everybody? That might help.
That might.
How about that?
Okay. All right, any other thoughts, comments, questions from the group? Okay, all right, Whit, Tysoo, thank you so much.
Okay, so as going forward, I think maybe I can touch base with Mark a little bit about, you know, any other information we can get or getting out to some of these sites. Certainly, we want to visit the branch library. Their plans of that, obviously, and get some information on that as well. So that would be a good start. And then as soon as there's a determination in terms of the library staff and programming, you know, we'd love to have a conversation with them whenever that's appropriate.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you. All right, next, we're going to roll into an update from Elizabeth.
Thank you, Greg. So we have been working to open up McMahon-Wittenbury beyond curbside. That means that it is ready for everybody here to visit. I was hoping to send out a doodle poll tomorrow to see people's availability. I can state that McMahon-Wittenbury allows for social distancing very easily. So everyone can go wearing a mask and be able to social distance when we're inside. So I hope that as many of you as possible can can do that. So does a doodle poll work for everybody? Okay. Um, we expanded hours at both locations on Wednesday night, starting tonight. We are now open until eight P M. I wanted to let you know that Prosser continues to have issues that are a cost in terms of bringing in contractors and outside entities to help out. The latest one was with our elevator. We had to shut that down. And we do have people who need the elevator visiting us on a daily basis for technology appointments. The people that came to service the elevator let us know that they no longer make parts for that elevator and that they had to go to their archives for the manual to even fix it. So that has been, there's been a Band-Aid put on that issue. But I just want to let everybody know that the issues at Prosser continue to be substantial. And that's including our HVAC system in the COVID nineteen epidemic pandemic, rather. The HVAC system and the health of that is one of the indicators for opening up to the public. So again, I just want to let people know about those larger issues. Um, we are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month in partnership with Eastern Connecticut State University. And we're doing the Big Read, so I invite everybody to participate that. In that, we have materials in both English and Spanish, and that is in physical book format and digitally. We are working on a survey. We have yet to survey the community since the COVID nineteen pandemic happened. The librarian staff is working on that survey. We are trying to have something that's short and sweet that we can pass out digitally, but then also to people who are visiting us for technology appointments and then also with curbside visits. This is something that I will be bringing up with the library board at our meeting next week. But I wanted to let everybody know this as we are talking about how we are going to survey the public in terms of their hopes in the new Bloomfield Public Library location. And on that note, to me, the biggest goal here is to make a location that is attractive and welcoming to everybody in Bloomfield. I want to reach the unreachable, the people that are working all the time and do not have time to fit into, you know, attending community forums on this subject. I have previous experience with this in Willimantic and Hartford. This is the hardest thing to do. So as we decide how we are going to move forward with this, I want us to all really think about that. There are a lot of people that need the library that will not participate in a survey, no matter how we do it. So I think our goal should be in the survey process to make it as easy to fill out as possible so that we get the biggest amount of feedback possible. So on that note, as we are discussing if Tysoo Kim is going to do it or if the library staff is going to do it, I was curious about everybody's thoughts on that process. And if we were thinking to have a short and sweet approach to a survey or a longer, more in-depth approach? And how to reach people who would not respond in a digital way? That's it for me.
Elizabeth, are you hoping to have that conversation now about whether or not folks want to use internal or outside consulting for the survey?
I think that would be very helpful. And I think that remarks from that conversation today can be brought up to the library board next week so that the board can have a more fuller discussion on this as well. I think, as Tysoo Kim said, the idea of a vision is so important in this. We can give you programming, but there there needs to be a vision. And I think that vision needs to start with the way that we're going to be collecting data about that vision. As soon as we start sharing locations, we're already, we're saying a lot with that. And having that vision, and I I think is really important. And when we say vision, I think it should be the library building committee, the library board, the library staff, the town council, and our our public. And how we go about getting all of that and collating it and deciding, you know, whose vision is. There's just a lot of things that need to come together so that it's more of a bouquet of things going into this than what could come out as more one directional. And those are things that I've seen previously in my career when we did go out to look for input. And again, you know, I know that last time we brought up Alice families and people who really need the resources the library is providing. And the many early literacy, financial literacy, technology literacy, all of these things. It's really important that we have just a lot of people going in and a vision to help us as we make decisions.
Ava.
Yeah, I actually have a question. The firm that you have mentioned that you said can do surveying, are they also able, if we have other sources of information, are they able to collate that? Because it may not be easy to quantify data points. You know, conversations with a huge bunch of people who are all from coming at this from different places, with different perspectives and different access. Then is that firm able to take all of those kinds of data? Some may be more easily adapted to an analytical model, but some may be observational. Will they be able to do that for us at need?
I think they are capable of doing that. I would suggest it might make sense to have a conversation with them, with Alan Berger directly. And perhaps, Greg, if you want to open a dialogue or contact him, that might make the most sense because I think he could explain what they do and the scope of what they can do as opposed to what this particular proposal reflected. I think this this proposal was geared more towards the data, the the online data survey collection. And I think what Elizabeth was referring to is you may need to reach people in town through other different avenues. And, you know, without the pandemic, there certainly would be more opportunities for like a town forum kind of meetings where you could just have an open ended meeting and allow people just to come in and and talk. Maybe a little harder to organize that now in this current situation, but there might be a strategy. And perhaps Alan Berger would have some suggestions from the work that he's been doing for other libraries around the country. So I would suggest bring him into the discussion. Yes.
Whit, do you think it's a good idea? We invite him or committee wish to hear from him directly what he can do and answer questions from committee? Because I think it really need one source orchestrating this effort. I know our librarians and, you know, many sources, but somebody who has done this many times before and knows, you know, what other towns are doing and be able to professionally be able to help and guide. I think it's very important. And maybe he answer questions, what he can do and what is his asset to provide this come up with appropriate vision for Bloomfield. Can Greg, do you think it's a good idea to invite him next meeting, Zoom meeting?
Yeah, I think it may make sense to have a conversation to see if he's either available for our next meeting or the meeting thereafter. But I think, yes, it would be helpful to have a conversation with him. I mean, I think the biggest benefit to having him or consulting is just timing wise because they probably have the capacity for a quick turnover. I'm assuming. I'm assuming. I don't know that for certain. But that is clearly something we can chat about. But again, you know, piggybacking on what Elizabeth said is how do we make sure that we're reaching the entire community? And that is a challenge, and, you know, we will have to be creative in finding ways to make that happen.
Another aspect of that is, as you start to explore ways to do surveys and things, is making sure that the word gets out through other sources, through the town paper, through other
Right.
ways of getting it out so people know that this is going on and they, they have opportunities to, to comment on it if they can.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Elizabeth? Comments on her presentation?
I do. And it's really not limited to just Elizabeth, but it ties into Elizabeth's presentation. But it also relates to everything else that's been discussed. And I think that, you know, it would be a great idea to see what the consultant has to offer. I agree with Mr. Kim. I think that the consultant should come and have a discussion with us. That way, we can ask the questions that we have upfront and not after the fact. I also think that we should reevaluate these locations, and I think we need to do that before we determine what the survey will look like, what the questions will look like, and how we plan on presenting that to our community. I mean, you know, we have six locations here that, as far as my memory, you know, will allow me to, to, to give. It's, we only was looking at the existing 330 Park McMahon. And so now we have three other additional ones and Town Hall based on what they previously done. But I mean, I think that we need to have further discussions before we start communicating. That way, the communication is, is one and unified and clear. It's not a, this is what it is, and then, oh, well, no, it's not that. I think we, we need to have further discussions regarding that. I'd also like to request that the presentation provided today be provided to all of the committee members as well as the new updated contract, where they're going to be giving us a breakdown. If that could be provided to us once it becomes available so that we could be prepared to speak to it at the next meeting following its receipt. Thank you.
Thank you. Good feedback. And I thought we will definitely make sure that the committee has a copy of the agreement prior to our next meeting. And your, your other point was on the sites. And I guess we should talk if we feel that we need more discussion on the selected sites before we go out and to the public. I'm open to that, or if we think that we want to hold off until we connect more with the community, that we could do that also. It's, you know, it's tiny. And so we can discuss that at our next meeting. All right. Anything else from the committee? On Elizabeth? No? Okay. Next item on the agenda, next meetings, we meet next on the 21st and November 4th. I thought initially it would be helpful to have the library board join us for our October meeting, but it looks like it may be more beneficial to have them at the November 4th meeting. Because I anticipate next meeting we'll talk contract, and I don't know that that would be the most beneficial time to engage the library board. But we'll chat with the library board chair to see if she thinks that it's doable. And if so, I'd, I'd like to invite the library board to participate in our November 4th meeting. And folks, okay with that? Okay, great. Nancy, do we have any public comment?
We have people from the public here. If anybody wants to speak, raise their hand, and I'll let you in. I guess we got a group of shy public tonight. No hands are raised.
Do we have anything from committee members before we adjourn? Lois?
Greg, I was wondering if, if thinking about this outreach effort, I really agree with Elizabeth's approach. Maybe we could all be thinking about what groups in the community we are familiar with and, and begin to think how that outreach could happen. That would be not just a survey, but we would have some personal contact with them. There's so many organizations in Bloomfield and places where people are getting together where they might be reached.
Yep, that's a great point. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Somebody?
It's all moved.
All right, great. Second.
Turn the voice on.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone. And again, we'll be in touch prior to our next meeting with respect to the, the contract. And we will invite our library board members to the November 4th meeting, assuming that works with the library chair and library staff. All right, so thank you all, and we'll talk soon. Good night.
Thanks.
Thank you, Greg.
You too.